Okay. Okay, I am calling today December seventeenth meeting to order. Patrick sends his regrets, he's not going to be here tonight. Can we all stand for pledge, please?
I need us to reply, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comment? Nobody signed in, okay. Thank you, protesters. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, nope.
And communications?
I think Katrina wants to publicly thank somebody.
Yes. Um, thank you to the Pembroke Fire Department for going to clean up a structure that was damaged over the weekend with the wind. We appreciate that. Um, and then we also have the winter concert coming up, the high school winter concert this Thursday, and I believe it's at six?
Thirty, six thirty.
Six thirty, six thirty. Thanks.
Good. The warrants have been circulated. And we have two-minute meetings for November nineteenth and December third. Does anybody have any?
So, what?
Yeah. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up, we have the discussion of the draft of the school committee goals. Kind of went through them and kind of moved them around, added, took away, tried to make them so they could be achievable and doable. So I don't know if anybody has any comments?
So I was wondering, I was, you know, I was thinking about this this weekend, and it seems like, like, do we need like a strategic plan instead? And then make the goals, I know I'm throwing like, adding more work, and I don't want to do that, but like, a strategic plan is like more long-term, right? Isn't it like a PDA?
Yeah, so we wouldn't do, we would bring somebody in to work with you all to create a strategic plan. You would want to do some sort of school committee retreat and work on that together.
Yeah.
I'm not, there's not.
It's just, this is so long.
There's too much here. I would never recommend that you move forward with nineteen goals.
But all of these goals are important, but don't necessarily belong as the goal, school committee goals. I feel like it's more like a strategic plan we're trying to create.
I wonder if we could set a goal to schedule a strategic plan or a retreat. Maybe we add that, but, um...
Because it does, it is needed, like, we have, I mean, this whole thing is like our direction. This is like what we want to see happen in our schools, but it's really not attainable in six months. There's a lot here, right?
Yeah, I think there's some that, I know we had talked about, first, it had been mentioned about potentially doing some as twelve-month goals versus eighteen-month goals. But I think we should prior, prioritize, try to prioritize the best we can based on what's the highest need right now. And then set some to the side, knowing that we're not, we're not, even in twelve or eighteen months, not going to be able to accomplish all of this. But I agree with you, I would like to do a strategic planning session, but I think to Erin's point, we also want some guidance around that to make sure that it's the most and the best use of our time as well. So I think we should consider when we could do a retreat for a school committee to do that type of strategic planning. But I don't want it to hold up our goals for now, but I do think we have to cut things down. But I think we just save it to discuss at the strategic planning meeting.
So unfortunately, that's not the goal.
That's what I mean, yeah.
And would that be long-range planning potentially to plan any of that, or is that?
No, I think you as a committee need to make that decision, not a self committee.
And so if we had somebody work with us, is it pricey? Is it like a?
Um, yeah, I mean...
It's pricey. It's like, because we pay a lot for the master plan for the task.
It's not quite as involved as that. Um, but it's, you know, two or three days of facilitated meeting, so...
Yeah. So it ends up being pretty pricey.
Yeah, you'd have to...
Which we can't even afford to do.
Yeah, I don't even know that I would recommend, it's really something that you would do like in the summer or like when you have a chunk of time that you can go just do that.
Yeah.
I, I think it makes sense to wait until the summer. I wasn't suggesting we do it mid-year, but we could plan now for something to be over the summer.
Right.
Is there one goal?
What if everybody picked one?
Well, like, one overall, like, is, is, is there any one section?
So like, I, I feel like, um, you know, we have a lot of, like, we have these goal one and goal two. And I think those are great goals. We don't necessarily need every single one of those bullet points. We could probably just, I, I, make it a bit smaller for each of the objectives. Just do like one or two goals, reach the objective, because it's almost like we have sub, so many sub-goals. You know, I think achievement through data-driven decision-making is a great goal, right? And that can encompass a lot, but maybe we need to bring, you know what I'm saying, like, bring it in. Like, I, I mean, we, I think we all are on the same page, and all of those are important.
But cut down on the, like, almost like those objectives, the bullet points.
I mean, I think it's almost like we're micromanaging Erin a little too much in this.
Yeah.
If that makes sense. Like, we're like giving up so many bullet points that it's like silly.
Yeah.
I mean, some of them are just tasks, right? They're not...
Right, right.
Yeah.
And we don't want to put tasks in. I don't know, my off, my off-base?
No, I, I agree with you. I was, I was just trying to think of like...
Just remember how much shorter this still is than the first...
It was nine pages.
Than the first draft, so...
It's so much shorter, and you did a ton of work, so...
It's like half.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or less.
But we don't want to, we don't want to micromanage either, so...
The one that I'd like to highlight is, I didn't know this was a thing because we weren't here, but I would love to bring back the hard copies of the Titan Times magazine.
Oh, yeah, that was...
Yeah.
I don't know if both of you, I think that would be like a fantastic way to kind of get and show the community like what we're doing, like what the town, what, you know, like showcase the schools, like...
Yeah.
I think that is a, could be a really...
Sure, so I agree with you. I think all of these are equally important.
Yeah.
And I would love to see all of them. However, I think like goal one, communication with family, better, maybe we refine the goal one statement. Like, um...
Improved communication?
Exactly, improved communication through blah, 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 you know, like, and just make it like one goal. And then, um...
The data-driven decision-making, for sure.
Yep.
It might be a different way to look at this, but I almost looked more at the objectives than the goals.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? To me, I looked at it as what's the most important thing to me here? It's how we interact with the community, you know, not, not just, you know, parents and students, the school community, the whole thing. So I kept kind of reading this over in my head, and I said, wow, it's like the teach becomes a student, student becomes a teacher. And I said, I look more like, I'm trying to achieve the objective. You know, and there's a million ways to get there. I mean, that's, there's a million ways to skin a cat. But I just think a lot of these things, you know, will improve student achievement for all the students. I think if we build, you know, communication with the families and what we're trying to do with various school programs.
Yeah.
I, I think one will lead to the other.
True.
You know what I'm saying? It's just...
Yeah, and I will say, you know, now that we have also the curriculum, she was here, her name was?
Melinda.
Yeah, Melinda. I feel like, I feel better about some of, having more direction with the achievement in that way. So I think that does make sense. But I also don't want to not have anything based on achievement since that is like one of the main...
That's your main job.
...goals of the school committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I think we could cut down on some of those bullet points, for sure. For example, um, I feel like the identifying curriculum strengths and challenges is kind of already happening with some of the work that Melinda is doing. And as well as the high-impact instructional strategies.
Because maybe some of...
So keep in mind, Melinda is just elementary.
She is, yeah, that's true.
So do, maybe instead of putting those, like, having requesting the, the content supervisor present on a rotation?
Yeah.
One a quarter or something, or whatever would make sense.
I would do that in...
Yeah, they'd be happy to.
Yeah.
Because that would, that could potentially knock out some of those for goal one.
Mm-hmm. So just wrap it into a presentation?
Yeah.
I think that makes sense. We could group those together.
The first, what, two at least?
Probably even three. Because they're gonna, based on the strengths and challenges, they could come up with, and as well as different data with professional development, they might need.
I mean, if you just want a quarterly curriculum report, we could rotate that through. Like, we could identify which areas, where you don't have to overthink it for the purposes of that document.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And then I think we could also take four and five from that and put that into sort of one, that's sort of more of a special education goal. And we could probably put that into one. Combine the two. You know, provide, um, provide annual training, you know, for all staff.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? And like, it's sort of the same...
Yes, I agree. I think it's more specific to just boiling down to that.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's, so goal one, we've, we've got it down to two bullets.
Yep.
That's pretty good.
So, yeah, smudge the first three together, smudge the last two together. And then the third, uh...
The, the third one, we could just simply do like, um, uh, something like, you know, uh, align, align curriculum with mass core standard, you know, work toward aligning. Because that, we're trying, in this, we're saying two years of world language, one, you know, one semester of visual performing arts. That's so specific. We don't necessarily need...
Which one are you on? I was on the, uh...
You know, goal two, the first.
Oh, goal two, okay. I skipped right over that.
You know, like, I don't know if we want to even call that out. Maybe we just want to just, uh, I don't know.
I think, I'm, I'm wondering about the, because of the changes going on with the competency, um... Determination, competence, I've heard that seventy-five times today, but competency, determination, and MCAS. I'm wondering if we hold off on that so we don't write a goal based on something that...
That's a good point.
Yeah. But I do think we should put in there the piece of the one semester for visual and performing arts.
I actually don't agree with that. I think it should be one year. Because mass core is one year, so I don't even want to see that written out at this point in time.
Yeah, I was wondering if we could do one semester and then another semester, like, later down the line so that it's a slow rollout?
Yeah, or two semesters. Or even two, it doesn't have to be one full course year, it could be two semesters.
It's one unit, which is, oh, yeah, that is one year.
Yeah, but I think we had talked about it at EdSub about rolling out one semester and then later rolling out an additional semester with the goal of ending with one year as the requirement.
Right, I'm not sure that the capacity is there for that right now. We're just one year out from not allowing freshmen to take studies, and we saw an increase in a lot of our electives with that change. I would not recommend that you put the one-year constraint on the schedule without at least trying the one semester first. But we can talk about that when we get to EdSub. I think that what Sue's saying is movement towards mass core.
Right.
Not defining exactly what the steps are.
Yes.
I hear you, I understand.
Okay, got it. That makes sense.
Right, the, the steps flush themselves out through EdSub and whatever else.
Right.
And like J and whatnot, so... And this is so specific, it doesn't need to be, and, you know, um, you know... See how we can...
Yeah, I feel like the development offer electives at PCMS, I think that's going to come out with the program studies, so I don't really think we need to necessarily go into that.
We're already meeting our goals, though.
Right, I know.
That's where, that's where we even come in, we can check them all off.
That's true, that's true.
And then we could also say, like, explore opportunities to increase exposure to, you know, well, you know, for all grade levels, not just like, you know, I don't know. I'm trying to think of a general statement we could make for the... Because obviously, I think it would be great to have fifth and sixth grades, French and Spanish exposure to.
Oh, I see what you're talking about, the, the world language.
Sorry, I can't, I'm...
No, you're fine. You're good. Maybe increase opportunities at the elementary level for exposure to world languages?
Yep.
And keep it a little bit more open?
Maybe roll out as it go, because that's, it's already a big ask.
Yes.
To get, you know, what, what full-time employee it would take to offer...
Yeah.
For just two grades at three schools.
So could we explore the potential rollout for increased? So it's more of like, we're gonna figure out what that looks like?
Yeah. And then rolling, and if, like, do a...
Have the research done kind of thing, rather than let's do it, like, let's get, let's research this.
I think that makes sense.
Research it for, for extending it below fifth grade?
Just research it generally. Yeah, just let's, I mean, I think we need to get more data from, you know, other districts, what they do. Like, what's, you know, what is the state looking to do for all grade levels? You know, and really have some data-driven decision-making.
I agree, because I don't even know what, to be perfectly frank, I'm not one hundred percent sure what that would look like in terms of cost and staffing, and then also how long it takes to, to plan and then implement that type of program. I don't want to tie us to that if we don't know. I do want us to make movement on having more exposure in elementary, but I don't want to promise something that can't happen.
Right.
Within a year.
Right, so that makes it a little bit...
Well, I do have a, I did put September twenty twenty-six, so it's not this September.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if we just generalize it, research that, and then maybe, um, for the last three bullet points, have it be, um, something about introducing or, you know, provide more student choice at the secondary level for, you know, research providing more choice at the secondary level for vocational, you know, like, just sort of put all, put it all in like sort of one sentence. I don't know how to word it, but...
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think part of what we talked about too at a previous meeting where we were talking about pathways and the music program was exploring apprenticeships. So I'm wondering if we talk about, um...
Yeah.
Explore opportunities such as blank, 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 as like possibilities, because we don't one hundred percent know what's going to happen for the vocational vote in January with the districts that are involved in that.
Right.
So there's a lot of moving pieces. So I think if we do that and list out apprenticeships, vocational opportunities, after-hours opportunities. I know there's a, there was a grant last year that came around in March for the after-hours program, so we can keep an eye out for that.
Yeah, I think that's great. And so like, we could take this whole meeting and go through the whole document, but perhaps one of us could, you know, go sit with Erin and try to generalize the bullet points, you know, and then come back. Does that make sense?
I think so. I think if we try to go through absolutely everything right now, it's going to take too long.
Yeah, so it's up to, I mean, I'm happy to do it, Allison, you can continue to do it.
That's what this was, just as that was.
No, I know, I know. Just... One kind of level setting. So this was nine pages, now it's four pages. It's still too much, but what you're doing is just taking the stuff and making it one run-on sentence instead of five bullet points. The expectation of what you're looking for us to accomplish over the short period of time is still relatively the same, but with no necessarily measurable item, right? So I, I think for, for me, when I think about goals and goal work, it's here's the goal, here's my objective, here's the goal, and here are the five action steps and the timeline that I'm expecting those in, right? So I think that's the only way to really keep yourselves accountable to the, to the progress. So saying, easily saying, having a quarterly curriculum update, we can easily do that. But by saying, research X or explore Y. I explore things on the internet every day. Have I met that goal? Absolutely not.
Yeah.
I, I, you guys have to be more articulate in what, what you're looking for. And so a lot of this is budget, budget-dependent, and so you need to phrase things in a way where you all don't affect change in a lot of these areas, and the only support you can give to it is through the budget process. So support the expansion of world language at the elementary level through the budget process, right? So we can give you all of the research in the world about how great it is, what everybody else in the state is doing, what the state wants us to do, what the country's doing, but if we don't have the funds to do it, you're never going to accomplish the goal. So you have to tie some of it to the, to the areas that you, you can affect change, and that's budget and policy. So you, you want to make sure that when you're thinking about what you're leaving in there as the actionable words, that there are things that you all can actually do. You know, we're happy to gather information and share it, you know, having Melinda here was great. Jonathan has been here in the past, Dr. Galligan has been here in the past. Those are, those are great things to, to hear and see, and that's an easy...
Um, you know, we're happy to gather information and share it, you know, having Melinda here was great, Jonathan has been here in the past, Dr. Galligan has been here in the past, those are, those are great things to, to hear and see, and that's an easy thing, but some of these other. More complex things like expand opportunities for vocational, project-based learning, apprenticeships, all of that needs to be supported financially also.
Mm-hmm. Right. So how would you word it?
I think you guys should focus on what you think your objectives are first. Do you all agree that these are the right? Five objectives? I mean, it's hard to make a case against any of that.
I know, I know, that's what I was just thinking, uh.
Um, I, I do, I think I'm. I feel very strongly about. Uh. Uh, you know, building, you know, commu- the communication, the communication piece of that objective, I feel very strongly that we. As a district should be working on. Um. I, I think all, all of them are important, so I don't know how to.
Right, as long as you agree that these are the five objectives, I'm happy to sit down with Allison or whomever you deem the person that wants to, to do this. And pick a goal or two, I, some of them, there's four here, so I would say like under communication, I would appreciate having two goals, I understand that, um.
So like, I think we could take out goal three.
Right, so I'm happy to do that, but I, but the, the structure is going to feel different than this, right, and there has to be places where you are measuring your progress on the goal. So explore, research, um, discover. Coordinate, those are really great verbs, but there's no way to.
Measure it.
Measure progress there, so I, I, if, if it's okay with you all, if you agree that these are the right objectives, I'm happy to. Work with Allison to, to combine as much as we can into what's an achievable goal, but I think what you all need to see is, here is the goal, and here are the steps to that goal, and the timeline in which they need to be completed.
Yeah.
Or else the document just keeps going, right, it's December now.
Yeah.
I mean, it says.
Well, I'm optimistic that we can achieve a lot of this stuff as we go through the spring and even into next fall, um, but you, you want to, for your own sense of. Accomplishment, want to say, okay, we identified this and we've, we've, three of the five steps, we've been able to get done this year, next year, you know, we, we're going to focus on these two. Um, I think for reporting out purposes, I want you all to feel some success in these goals, because when they're open-ended.
You're not going to have. I, exa- I agree with you, that at the same time, they're like. There's too many, like, it's too pin, like, we have too much.
Yeah, so I'm happy if, if Allison's the person to sit down and, and go through this.
Yeah. Happy to have that.
Again.
If Alice, if you're just sick of it, let me know when I'll take over.
What is our timeline for needing a second read?
This is on here as a discussion, so, um, if you don't pick it up by, as. Like a document for you to vote on at your January meetings, then you'd have to just suspend the policy on the eight weeks, that's all.
Okay.
Okay. I'll count the days and figure out.
Okay, anybody else have any other?
Um, the only other thing I'm thinking is about, um, making sure that we can include, um. Something about, maybe under sin- financial stewardship. Um. Creating systems when there's a new person on the school committee, so that we have something like a.
Yeah, so it's on, the development and mentorship protocols for new school committee members on budgeting.
Oh, under budgeting, okay, great, then I, never mind.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
Perfect.
I think it's actually in the, in the, yeah, I think there's a policy.
Yeah, it's just not identified who that person is that does that work.
Yeah.
Weird, silent on that.
It's supposed to be the chair.
As long as it's not the superintendent.
Yeah.
I feel good about it.
You have enough to do, yeah.
I think it's supposed to be the chair.
I also think there's some things we could do though, like just creating resources, like if you have this question, this is who you go to, this, like, so I, I'm happy to do some of that. I don't know everything, but I can find it, I'm a really good internet researcher.
Yeah, I think, you know, when you come on board as a school committee member, it's like.
An onslaught.
It's a lot, um, and your communication is only with me, right, so you all are not supposed to reach out to Jess or ask Mary about something. It's all supposed to come through me, which is. A, a lot at times, but I think maybe creating some resources.
Just that says what to, yeah, like, a commonly asked question for a newly elected school committee.
Some of that stuff exists out there that we can just pull together.
Yeah, yeah. Awesome, thank you, that's all.
Okay. Superintendent, report.
Sure.
So the first thing under my report is the maintenance of effort budget, so that is up there on the screen, and if all works, then I'll be able to look through it. Um, even though it was requested that I change the photos, I didn't. I appreciate looking at children at the middle school that graduated five years ago from high school. Makes me feel old. Um, so I'm going to go over a little bit of just what we're looking at towards, um, fiscal year 26, obviously it is super early, um, in the process, so talk a little bit about the assumptions that are included in those. Numbers that we're going to share, and then what the timeline and next steps are. Maintenance of effort for anybody new to this is, uh, MOE maintenance of effort means doing everything we're doing this year at next year's prices, so that includes, um, you know, uh, inflation, contractual increases. Um, tuition increases, you know, increasing utilities, copy paper is going to go up 30 cents, that kind of stuff, so just doing everything we're doing, all of the same number of classes. At all of the same schools, um, that we have now, so this year our budget is 38,580,000. Um, next year, with all that being said, it is projected to be 40,910,000, that is a difference of 2.3 million, which by itself is a big number, but if you look down, you can see where we have historically been at this point in the past. 13 or 14 budget cycles, so it is not out of the realm with where we have been before, because a ton of work happens on that number before we are at the admin recommended budget or even at town meeting. Obviously, there are some assumptions in this budget, we do have collective bargaining agreements, um, with four units, our, um, all of our contracts are up for negotiation, they all expire on June 30th of 2025, so we will begin negotiations, um, at the change of the calendar year. Um, we do have a significant amount of our resources are in special education tuitions, um, so the operational services division is anticipating a three and two-thirds percent increase. Really associated to, with inflation from this year's prices, you'll remember two years ago it was a 14% increase, which was outrageous compared to where we had been in years past, before that, the 10-year average was 3%. Though we're carrying that 3.67 assumption, those rates will not be finalized until the first Wednesday in February, so once that happens, we'll have a, a more firm number on our sped number. Uh, we are in the second year of a three-year, next year will be the second year of a three-year contract with first student with two additional option years. Um, the increase in transportation with first student for next year is a 4.25% increase, which is really pretty good compared to what other people are getting out there that are bidding this year. You'll remember that we still had two option years left last year, but we chose to go out to bid to see if we could get, um, some more competition. First student is traditionally the only vendor that, um, bids on our buses, um, they were the only vendor that bid this past time as well, um, but they came back with a more competitive number than what they were offering us for that option year, so I think that was time and, and effort well spent to bid that. Special education transportation is just a different animal, um, we do our best to estimate what we think it will be for students, um, but there's a lot of moving pieces for that, so. You'll see for fiscal year 26, we're anticipating, um, about $160,000 increase, right now, we are already $97,000 greater than what we had anticipated. So a lot of that has to do with the schools that our students attend, um, a lot of special education placements are on that 128 belts, there's no easy way to get there from here, it is a long ride for kids. Um, we do our best to partner, um, with other districts that have students going, share the cost of a van, we do a lot of that, um, but there are just some, some things that are outside of our control, so. We are fortunate that special education transportation is part of the circuit breaker reimbursement formula, um, now this is year three, before it was a full 100% fund from the district, so. Every year we try to do some special education pre-buy, um, so I am anticipating, uh, that's a conservative estimate in there of $500,000, so even just with that, if we did $500,000 of special education pre-buy, our deficit would be. 1.8 million instead of the 2.3 that's on the previous slide, so there's definitely a ton of work, um, that happens on that number. We've talked a little bit in the past about circuit breaker and how that works, we are fortunate here to be using our circuit breaker in the fiscal year after we receive it, so the quarterly payments that we're getting for this year, we use towards tuition next year. We are one of the only districts that are kind of left in that cycle, a lot of communities are spending the circuit breaker money in the same year, same year that they get it. Um, this is one of the things that we consider, for lack of a better word, a lever that we can pull if we're looking to solve for a budget deficit, but once you pull it once, you're out of the cycle, right, we're never going to get to the point where we have a year and a quarter. Um, of, of reimbursement that we can depend on, so.
Yeah.
In some tough years in the past, we have used a piece of the first quarter as an offset, when we're trying to balance the budget as we get closer to school committee, I mean, to town meeting, we have been fortunate that the special education tuition number has fluctuated. Down, so that we haven't had to use the payment, so usually, I think, one year we plugged $40,000 or something, we didn't end up needing to take it from that, so we are still in. The situation where we're using the full reimbursement collected in this fiscal year for costs in next fiscal year. Tuitions in special education just seems to be one of those account lines that people have the most questions about. You know, in some of our presentations in the past, Jess has talked about the different types of placements for students, obviously we have students that are in district that are special education, we have. A, a small number of students that are out of district, I think 37 maybe, Jess?
Less.
34.
It's like 4, 3, 3, 4.
But those tuitions can be anything from, so this dollar amount is just for our out-of-district students, and that can be a student placed at a collaborative for $45,000, or a student placed in a residential placement for $1.4 million, there's a giant range of, um, tuitions in, in that, that bucket, so. Um, there are a couple of placeholders, both in our 25 and 26 budget number, meaning there are some students that are in the pipeline, um, that aren't in a placement yet, or students that may be coming back, um, so there's still some movement just, um, in the fiscal year 25 and 26 budget that can happen as we go through this process.
Mm-hmm. I question on, um, and maybe this may or may not be able to be answered, but, um.
I'll give it a shot.
How many, yeah, I just need for, because I know there's like, when you talk about students, you don't want to say if it's under a certain amount, whatever, but how many students do you usually see either moving out or moving in on an average? Um. In a year?
We hover around 30 to 30.
Yeah, so I think usually like if two go out, two come in, like it's, it's almost a wash, we've hovered around that low 30 number for a while.
For a long time.
Yeah, okay, got it, that's helpful to know. I was just, if you saw my face a moment ago, I was looking at the, um, fiscal year 20, the percentage increase was larger of that year, but obviously it was 2020, so. Yeah, there was some movement there in 2020.
Maybe there were some things happening that year.
Things happened that year, that's a blur, but I remember something happened. Global pandemic, whatever.
Last slide is just process and timeline, as I said, it's super early, um, chapter 70, so the state funding formula for education, we get our first kind of look at that funding stream, um, usually the second Wednesday in January of, you know, the stars align and all things are equal. I wouldn't be anticipating anything more than the $25 or $30 a student that we've seen in the past, that has gone up in years past, but when we're doing this process, we generally go with what the floor is, and if, if the numbers goes up as it goes through the, the House or the Senate or, or whatnot, then we'll, we'll adjust accordingly, but we want to start with the lowest expectation, so that we're not, you know, in May trying to cut something quickly. Uh, there was a lot of success with the joint meeting that we had last year with both advisory and the select board, so that is, um, scheduled to happen as well, um, obviously hearing the feedback, the plan is to present to the, the. School committee first, so you all can ask your breadth of questions before we invite in the other two boards to ask questions as well, um, all of that will happen probably in the late March timeframe, we'll start your department budgets, um, hopefully at your second meeting in January, if not, the first meeting in February, and work through all of those, um, through the course of February and March.
So I think, like, when we talked about it, Budget Sub, and I think some of you were there, so may have heard it, but, uh, it's going to be a very difficult budget year, but Patrick said, and I agree with him, that the sky's not falling, basically, that we, you know, we'll, we'll make our way through it, but it's still going to be tough.
Yeah, it's going to be tough, because all you really have is people, right, you don't have, there's no, there's not a ton of discretionary funds, like in the entire $38 million budget, there's about a million dollars that we spend on. Copy paper, toner, that kind of stuff, um, textbooks, there's, there's just not a lot, um. I do think, quick back of the envelope, really horrific math that Patrick was doing last week, I think he landed like, we're going to be solving for 350,000, I, I think in your mind, it, it's a more comfortable place to be thinking, we're going to be solving for about 500,000. Um, and those are going to be really tough conversations and decisions, and it's impossible for us not to impact. Class sizes or program offerings with a number like that, so. Though the sky is not falling and we don't need to have a massive layoff or, or anything like that, do know that getting to a number like 500,000 is a very difficult process.
And is that pulling any of the levers?
That's not pulling, you could pull a lever, right?
But that 500 is not.
No, so there's a couple, um, that 500,000 includes a couple of enrollment-driven assumptions that we would make in any year, and in a good budget year, we'd reinvest those funds, in 12 years, we have never reinvested the funds, but in a good year, we would. Um, so there's a couple of enrollment shifts at the elementary level, and then a couple at the middle school, um, depending on kind of where we land with, um, some of the changes in electives and whatnot over there, so.
Yeah. But the idea is to, like, hopefully not touch the stabilization fund, because.
So we have a couple levers, right, so we have your circuit breaker that you could spend this, in the year we get it, instead of in the year ahead, we have done a, a great amount of work to establish and then fund a special education stabilization fund, so we have about $600,000 in that, um, that is truly meant for. An extraordinary special education expense that we were not planning for, um, I would argue it. Doesn't really make sense to use it to balance your budget, because if you're not planning for your budget, then we are dead in the water to begin with, um, but if you were to use some of your circuit breaker and something were to happen, you'd have the sped stabilization to fall back on too. The other one is pre-buy, um, special education pre-buy, we have some flexibility, we have been carrying an amount in our budget for vocational tuitions, obviously the number of students that we have, our last group of students will be graduating from Silver Lake this year, and we do have one student at South Shore Tech, um, the rest of our students are at the Aggies, so that line has a, a 100,000 or so in it that you could not fund moving forward. Um, but then if there's a vocational opportunity for a student, we wouldn't have the money in our budget, so we would need to go back through and, and find that somewhere else, um, we have been hanging on to that for a bit now in hopes that. Um, opportunities arise for our kids and then we're able to fund them, vocational tuition is, is one of the lines that we struggled with, um, for five or six years to get to the right funding level, there was a ton of work that was done with the select board, um, and the school committee as it shifted over time to get that number to where it really represented our need, um, and if we go back and fund it at zero, then we're going to have to build it back up again.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I mean, obvious, I, I think as, as much as we can keeping this sped stabilization fund, because you never know, I mean, just thinking about those numbers you mentioned with how much different placements can cost. We might get a new student, you never know what can happen, and you want to keep that there, because you need it. But that's just my opinion.
So, when, when the departments do their budget, would they be potentially taking into consideration, hopefully, our finalized goals?
It depends what your timeline is, right, so if we're going to ask. The high school to present on January 21st, and you all are taking a second reading of your goals on January 21st, I mean, there'll be some sort of, obviously, your goals are not developed in a vacuum, so I've shared it with administrators, and they align with what we're, what we're working on anyway, so you'll see some correlation between, it may not be exactly. What, what's in the, the document, but we can shift if we have to, because even after we do the department budgets, your real overall look at the budget is admin recommended budget, so. There's not a ton of numbers in the individual department budgets as far as funding, it's more about goals, it's more about showing the achievements, showing the value of the investments that we've made in years past, wanting to keep those or wanting to shift and do something different, so.
Got it, that's helpful.
The document that you shared at Budget Sub that shows the. You know, are you going to like?
Yes, I'm going to share it with all of you, so, um, it is a roll-up version of our fiscal year 25 budget, um, I'm just waiting for us to pay the, the last set of quarterly tuition, so that you have an actual. That can rein in that sped number a little bit, because I think the sped number is where it fluctuates the most, um, just so you can see kind of where we are this year, and where, um, I anticipate we're landing on June 30th, that shows how we would fund a pre-buy, and that's the direction that we move in.
So is the plan for the Budget Subcommittee to be. Working down that number, and then they come with the recommendations, or like, are they working the admin, like, how does that?
Yep, so you, the, the work of Budget Sub at this point is generally working with the town manager on what is the amount that we're getting from the town, um, and we, Patrick and I did meet with Bill and Tracy. A few weeks ago at this point, you mentioned it at our last meeting, um, obviously it's early in the town budget cycle too, so there's some assumptions in what Bill's working with as numbers like health insurance and pension, and over time come in, he'll start to, you know, get his number to a more actual number, there's definitely. There's definitely conversation between Budget Sub and, there's a Budget Sub of the Select Board as well. We've met in the past, I think we'll at least meet once or twice over the cycle to talk about, there's some receipt stuff, some fee stuff that we want to go through. You all don't see our full budget until you get admin recommended, and you work on that usually together as a group. Budget Sub doesn't take a pass at that, but you all do. But Budget Sub will look at fees, make some recommendations, bring those forward.
Very good. Do you have any other questions for this?
So after tonight, there'll be a FY '26 budget tab on the website. Anything we present relative to the budget will be posted on that tab following the meetings. The second item under my report, I'm not really sure where I put the field trip under Ed Sub, it doesn't go there, but that's okay, is just winter sports in your packet, you have an overview of the winter sports numbers. Great, great, great interest this year, so 45% of our students are participating in winter sports. If you take a look at our indoor track number, you'll see 120 students. That's amazing. Those are, those are great numbers. Our five-year average for winter sports is about 37%. Keep in mind, in 2020, there was not a real winter season. There was a lot happening there. Like, football played for two weeks or something, I don't even remember. But 40, for 45% of our students to be winter athletes, that's amazing.
Yeah.
It's pretty amazing how the number went up despite the enrollment going down.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I always ask Brian to share it as a percentage, because that's the part that matters, right?
Yeah.
Is the percentage.
Way to go, Brian.
Yep.
And Mr. Talbot.
Yep, you've done great, great stuff over there. We would prefer if indoor track was at a number that fit on two buses, because we own two buses, but we are now sending three buses to the reggie.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
I was wondering about that.
Yep, three, three.
Oh, that makes sense, yeah.
This Friday, we only have two, so I think there's a handful of families that are driving. We're just working it through as best we can.
Oh, yeah, that's 120. Wow, that's a big difference.
It's great, though. I am not driving. Should take the bus. Yep, that's fine. So it was just an FYI, obviously, Brian will share some larger trends with athletics in his athletic budget when he presents in the spring, talk to you about any great ideas he has for that program, but I will echo, I think, David Mostafa says that our athletic department has grown tremendously in the past five years. I think a lot of that is a testament to Brian and the work that he does, so we are thankful to have him.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I think, just adding, if you look across the board, look at something like wrestling, eight kids to 26 kids, you know, I just think that's amazing. Indoor track is my law.
And some of it's a function of finding the right person, right?
Yeah.
Very true. And so we have seen some movement in some of our coaching positions, and I think some of that kind of reinvigorates programs at times. It has the opposite effect at times, too.
Yeah.
But I do think that we are fortunate to have a great group of coaches that is committed to Pembroke and we're committed to them, and I think Brian does a nice job of holding on to staff that are doing such a good job here.
I have a great youth. One question, when we do a waiver for like eighth grade girls hockey, are they considered part of this company?
They are, yeah.
I thought they were.
The girls hockey number has, I think there's four eighth graders on that team. We did not exercise the waiver for girls basketball, so those 21 students are all Pembroke High School students. Gymnastics and cheerleading, I think there's two gymnasts that are eighth graders, but they are included in that. And that's just our number, right? So Silver, we co-op with Silver Lake, those Silver Lake students are not included.
I was just going to say, we have really great youth programs here for the kids, too. We're building, building into this, too.
Yeah.
You have to give parents some credit for that, you know, when you look at youth sports, you look at scouting, some of these programs, it's thank you to all the parents if you're watching.
Yeah. Lots of driving.
The last thing in my, that should be in my report that's under Ed Sub, for some reason, is the conceptual approval for the overnight out-of-state, really out-of-country field trip presented by the World Language Department to go to Spain in February of 2026. So this is not a new request, this is an exchange. So you can see in the details that it's an exchange between Pembroke High School and a school in Spain. Obviously, we need to gauge interest, that's why we give it to you so far in advance to make sure that we have enough students and families that are interested in participating, We will come back to you when there's more firm numbers, and after they're able to have an interest meeting with families.
So do I have a motion to consider the conceptual approval of the PHS overnight out-of-state, out-of-country field trip request?
So moved.
Second.
Call with favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now you're on to Ed Sub. In your packets, there's a whole bunch of materials relative to this topic. I'm going to hand it over to Mary Beth and Mark to answer any questions you may have and go over a summary of the proposed changes. Ed Sub did meet last week to talk about most of these. Obviously, this is a first read, an opportunity for you guys to ask some initial questions, but you will have plenty of time to pour over the document and ask any more questions before it comes to you as a second read or approval.
Probably the best place to start is the new courses, that's always of high interest. You can see there that we are proposing that we add two new AP classes, one in the English Department and one in that, so AP Seminar. I don't know if you had the time to read the blurb or not, but it sounds extremely challenging and very high level. It sounds great, a class that merges discourse with research and presentation, so I think that that's an excellent opportunity for our students. Same with AP pre-calc. These are classes that the College Board has offered for a few years, and we were waiting to sort of, they were brand new, probably, say, two or three years ago, and we've been waiting a little bit to see how other area towns do with integrating them into their curriculum, and we're hearing really positive feedback from those participants that are currently offering those courses, which is why Dr. Galligan and Jonathan Shapiro moved this stuff forward for us to consider.
Yeah.
Those are the two AP classes. It's kind of, they're in twos here, so in, there are two third-year Project Lead the Way classes, one in the computer-integrated, computer-integrated manufacturing, which is part of the engineering program, and one in the science area for biomedical, called medical interventions. And then there were two proposed by the music department, two semester courses, which were wildly popular. We had similar courses to these, not, probably not as technical as what Gwynn is proposing for music technology and rock band, but two similar classes ran at PCMS a few years ago, and they were very, very popular. So another opportunity for our students who are looking for something, a door opener, they don't have to be lifelong music aficionados to partake in these classes, so.
That's awesome.
I think that that's a really, a great and creative way of looking at the program. So those are the new course proposals. I don't know if you have any questions about those in particular?
So just a reminder, with new course proposals, we're just asking approval to put them in the program of studies. We only run them if students choose them.
We have the staff on hand to teach these currently. There wouldn't be new hires.
There's no new hires involved in that proposal.
I just think we don't have the money maybe to do a new hire, so figured for that out there early.
Right, we'd be shifting resources from other electives, hoping that these are electives that students are interested in.
So theoretically, for the AP Seminar, these are kids that would traditionally just take honors.
It's a 10th grade class.
Instead, it's just like, it's a level up and, you know, for.
So it's a nationally norm curriculum, right, with an assessment at the end, which, depending on what your goals are, that's looked upon favorably
Right.
by colleges and universities, because they understand what that is. They know what that test looks like, they know how it's developed, they know what the scores mean. Whereas when a college or university gets our coursework grades, they don't know what got baked into that grade, right? They don't know what the final exam looked like, they don't know what projects were required, but they know for sure what students had to do in these classes.
Yeah, okay.
And thinking ahead a little bit, adding AP Seminar opens up the potential for a 10th grader to be taking three APs if they're in the right
Correct.
setup, and how is that?
So we caution, we do have, we do caution students in the handbook about what it takes to be an AP student and the amount of homework, because it's very much embedded with the concept of independent learning and learning to, you know, push ahead a little bit on your own, and also, you're accessing oftentimes college-level materials, so it takes longer depending on what age you are and where you're at in that progression. So we do caution our students about what it takes to be an AP student. We do work with guidance, and the guidance councils are very thoughtful about helping students with those selections, but it could potentially have students taking three APs.
And it would only be ELA for 10th graders? It would be an elective course for
Correct.
11th and 12th.
Yes, it would count as your ELA requirement in the 10th grade, but if you wanted to take it as a junior or a senior, you could, but it would not count towards your English requirement for those years.
And that's a standard, I think, that others
Correct, that's the one.
Yes, I am excited about that one. I think it'll help kids have another avenue for developing their research skills, and like you said, the presentation skills, which will all help, I think, no matter what.
It's very interdisciplinary, the way that it's written. I think that students from whatever they are seeing as their passion or whatever courses they're liking at the time, they could weave, they could weave it into the topics that are identified in that course. The next thing that we probably should attack is the couple of pages there on the edits. I will not bore you with the edits that have to do with grammar or pages, but the ones that are substantive, and the first one is on page five, integrating the work that Mark and the teachers have done on the portrait of the graduate, so that would be now, obviously, replacing some of the academic and social expectations that had been in place prior to the development of that document. The second one is a little bit in flux, too, the graduation requirement, as you're, if anyone's reading anything online, in the paper, anywhere you go, there's a lot of conversation right now about what the state is going to recommend to be the competency determination. So there is a recommendation at the state level about what the course of study should look like, but the competency determination is based, right, or had been based on MCAS. So the conversation that's taking place at the state level is, will it be completion of coursework, which is, looks like the direction that they're going, going in, or will it be the completion of sort of 10th grade coursework, and that 10th grade coursework maybe being linked to exams? I don't think they'll go in that direction, I think that could be a little bit messy, but I, those are sort of the things that they're grappling with right now, is how, how to advise districts to go forward with a competency determination for each local high school. So that's a little bit in flux, so we didn't, we didn't make a huge recommendation. Our recommendation is to adapt, not adopt entirely, but to adapt some pieces from MasCor by including two years of world language in a semester of the visual and performing arts. That is close to what they're recommending, but it's not exactly what they're recommending. But that's what we would, we would like to recommend as, you know, the educational professionals for what our students complete by the end of four years of high school.
In addition, we're optimistic that the guidance will be out soon, and then the plan would be for the Ed Sub Committee to meet again before this comes to you for a second read, so.
It's really, I think, right now, it's an issue of semantics. I think we're going to be looking at coursework, but how are we going to phrase that? And Katrina participated today in one of the webinars that was offered, and some of the other considerations having to do with, what about former students? Can they now come back and get a degree, and how do we manage that? So I'm not sure that's necessarily for this document, but those are all wrapped up in that competency determination and how we move forward, so. I was at a local area assistant superintendent's meeting on Friday, and everybody's in the same place, and we was a little bit stuck in terms of waiting for some guidance before you get out there ahead of it and then have to revise, so was kind of hoping that the state picks up the pace a little bit, gives us some guidance.
Last week, I posted on the listener for the NASE and got like a firestorm of conversations going, and it's really a mixed idea of what other towns and districts, some people have done nothing, some, you know, our town, I think it was 60-something percent voted to get rid of the MCAS, where some towns voted to keep it, and those committees are looking to keep potentially that requirement, but it seems like most are not. And then later that same day, they sent out, Desi finally sent out an updated guidance that is sort of helpful, but again, it more talks about for this year's graduating class, which from my understanding is, we don't have anybody in that, so, you know, based on Pembroke and based on, I think, what we're able to do is that, I think we will be, you know, looking at how to word it so that we do give some sort of, you know, like, outline that, in my opinion, would be removing the MCAS requirement.
Yeah.
I mean, I think those two paragraphs are basically going to end up coming out, because when, when is the program of study night? Do we have a?
It's the Thursday after vacation, February vacation.
Oh, after.
The Thursday after.
Okay, so we'd have at least three meetings.
Right, you want to be circulating the program of studies ahead of
Before that.
So you have your two meetings in January, you want to get it
Done.
We have our student assemblies before vacation.
Because I think I read something, one of the, late, was it in your notes, maybe?
They're not going to come up with it yet, that Russell Johnston, the acting commissioner of the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, said, "Don't expect anything before February."
And so what do we do in the meantime? Like, what do, if we have to have this document out, then?
So we're going to put our best thinking in it, and if we have to revise it, we'll revise it.
Yeah.
So obviously, there's three buckets of kids, right? The kids in the class of 2025, the kids that are currently in high school, and then the kids that aren't in high school, so you have to think about them like that. For our students that are in the class of 2025, I think we're in a good place with them. For our students that are even in the class of 2026, we're in a pretty solid place with them, too, because they've already taken
Okay.
all of the pieces. But, you know, I think there's definitely conversation that we can have at Ed Sub and have here, and, you know, we can put in what we believe to be the right thing, and worst-case scenario, we tweak that. It doesn't necessarily make a huge shift to the program of studies, it's really just a restatement of expectations, so. You know, we've talked a little bit about, are we delineating between our courses on what counts towards competency and what doesn't, and I think that's some of the conversation we would have. But that would, I don't anticipate the guidance that comes out is going to be overly helpful. I don't feel like it has ever been.
Because you're saying, like, what is math? What counts as four years of math?
Right, so are we saying it has to be four years of at least, at least college prep math, like, right? That type of conversation we can still have without the guidance being out? Or is it just any math?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But do you have to pass geometry or pick one?
Something, something.
Right, so they do make reference to tying those graduation requirements back to the Massachusetts frameworks and the standards in the frameworks, so it might have something specific to it regarding algebra and geometry. Because you're thinking like 10th grade is where MCAS was really considered is what they were testing. They were trying to give students plenty of time to go back and retake it.
Yeah.
Maybe we raise the bar.
Yeah, MasCor's in Algebra II or Integrated Math.
Right, but in 10th grade, a lot of our students are just Algebra I still.
Yes.
Yeah, and I mean, I think, you know, at the meeting today, the BS, B E S E meeting, they were talking about how they, there was conflicting opinions on even having MasCor be the thing that they go to. So I know some of the areas that they talked about for medium-term goals, which would be kids that are currently in high school but not the current graduating class in 2025, was looking at additional areas for history and social science, and then world languages, which Ed Sub has recommended, which we'll talk about.
And we already have a requirement for history, we already have
Yeah, we have that, yeah.
So we're, we're, and I think to your point, some of the MasCor, I mean, that's an expensive model, and not every district can provide
Right.
all of that, so they have to be careful, I think, in regards to
What they're requiring.
what districts can implement, right?
Yeah, yeah. The other thing they talked about was just defining some terms within the actual language of the law in the new statute, so that, hopefully, we'll get some guidance around that. And then requirements for district processes, right now, there are only recommendations, they gave us recommendations for those. And then Desi was basically going to require oversight with the process and public reporting, and then they also have some long-term goals, but anybody can find this recording, it's on the Bureau of Elementary and Secondary Education. There was a presentation today, so if anyone's curious, you can see it for yourself.
Thanks for taking the time to watch that, by the way.
Thanks for taking the time to watch that, by the way.
Yeah, I learned a lot, because I would, I mean, every, I think there's a lot of confusion, right? Because this happened and there were a lot of moving pieces that would have been better to figure out in advance so that there was more time to make these decisions and not feel rushed. Cause we're lucky, like Erin said, we don't have any students who fall into that 2025 category where we need to rush to figure out what to do for them. But there are some districts that are not in that case. And you can imagine the stress for families and the school committees that are having to, and the students, right? Like having to deal with, oh gosh, am I going to graduate this year? So thankfully, we're not in that position, but some are.
So we'll come back and revisit the page six, M-CAS and graduation requirements as we get more information from them.
Before you move past that though, can I just like point out, I know that we're still talking about whether or not, like you had indicated, you don't think that we can do two semesters of visual and performing arts as a requirement. But this implies that it was only one semester and I wonder if we could reword that somehow. Maybe we just don't reference Mass Core. So I don't know, like.
Right, the recommendation from.
The recommendation in the, in program of studies won't say anything about Mass Core. I just was trying to explain so that you have some background.
We are making, so the administration as well as supported by EdSub is two years of world language and a semester of visual.
Okay, all right, all right.
But with the idea that.
The language below Sue is the language that would be in the handbook.
All right, but the idea, I mean, I think we are, we definitely talked about adding one later, but I think it's a matter of rolling it out so it's realistic in terms of what can happen in a short period of time. But I agree, I would like it to be one year eventually. It's just a matter of getting there.
Yeah, and so can you just explain, just because if I have the question, I'm sure lots of other people do, why it's not possible to do two semesters, like make that a requirement right now?
So it's a resource issue for us right now. I, again, we saw an increase in students that selected music and art electives when we eliminated the ability to take the ninth grade study. We saw not as much of an increase on the art side as we saw in some of like the social studies electives. It is, I think, a more measured approach in the sense that if there is, if we need to staff the visual. It's like, it's elective against elective, right? So if I'm a social studies teacher and I teach three sections of world history and a section of US history, which I don't think I'm going to teach, and that fourth section for me is an elective. And then I don't, students, I don't have any students in that elective. So then I'm going back and saying, okay, your full-time position at Pembroke High School is now a .8 position at Pembroke High School. I would be hesitant to do that without seeing what the impact of putting one semester in is, because you're going to end up losing some solid staff in that while we work through what the numbers look like. I think it's, it's pretty similar to how we've rolled out things before.
Yeah.
You know, remember the original proposal for the studies was ninth and 10th grade? And then we said, okay, let's just start with ninth grade. You can see in here, we are not making a proposal to extend that to 10th grade in the program of studies. So I just, trying to be thoughtful about the ripple effect that changing a graduation requirement. Cause it's really for the class of 2029 that it would take into effect. So you would have the opportunity, if the expectation is going to change for the class of 2030, to make that change in next year's program of studies for the year-long worth of visual and performing arts. Allison, you did ask me at EdSub how many kids are meeting both and I have that number. I just didn't send it to you, so I'll send it to everybody.
Yeah, cause I was curious, like we have 71% that currently meet the world language and 77% that hit at least one semester of arts. What?
Who's who meets both right now, right?
Cause I think some of it too is what fits into, you know, schedules, when, you know, and all that too on whether it can be, because if you require, and if some classes are year-long ones that they choose to take or they are semester, most are semester-based, right, for the.
Not all of them, right? So obviously the electives that rock band and the others that were, music technology are, but the ensembles are year-long courses. I just think there's, I would be hesitant to roll it out as a year without seeing what a semester does to the constraints. Yeah, and I definitely wouldn't want to have, have there be back and forth with staff wondering in that way. Like that, that is, that makes sense, that we don't want to do that, right? It is, right, and I think that's the part, and when we get to some of the budget conversations and we're talking about, what is the most efficient way to run a schedule? You know, there's a couple of places where you might look at it and say, hey, I feel like you could do it with, you know, one less section of Algebra I. And then we say to you, okay, so we're going to go to a professional status teacher and say, you used to be employed full-time here, but now we have a .8 position for you, but please stay. You know, so you end up, it's, it's just, I don't think, from an employment standpoint, the best use of resources. But again, still open to conversation.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we definitely don't want to lose staff when we could avoid that.
I mean, these new courses could be wildly popular and we're going to have to make some shifts anyways. The good news is that teachers can teach one section outside of their certified area. So maybe somebody that teaches world history now wants to teach rock band.
Right?
Yeah, we actually have a social studies teacher that teaches a history of music class that's very popular, so.
Oh, nice, that's good, that's cool.
I mean, it doesn't fall under music, but it certainly could, so.
Yeah, we have a couple of musical teachers at the school that don't teach music, so you know, you never know. But yeah, I mean, that's a really good explanation and I think that a lot of people are wondering, so thanks for explaining.
Just following through on page nine, I had referenced earlier the message to AP students. Just, I wanted just to add one more thing, just reiterating for the thousandth time that we do not control what a college or university awards as credit. So your student may take an AP class and they may score very well, but the college or university they choose to attend may not take that as a credit. I just don't know how many times to say that or in how many ways, but it's important. Especially adding early APs, like an AP seminar and AP pre-calc, which are not traditional college-level classes. Some of the colleges and universities are taking it, but some are not. So I just don't know how many times I can say it, but I will keep saying it. We'll be adding in where to find the estimated college GPA. We'll be adding that to the Power School portal for families. Some of these other things just have to do with adding classes to what, what will count towards the pathway as electives. So that's, these are all good. These are more ways for you to reach those magic, magic numbers. The digital arts things are very, those are changing the titles to better reflect the software that's being used in the classes for, for, for digital arts. Also, most of those classes, I think this was just a bit of a typo in the past, but all of those classes are offered at the honors and CP level. And we noticed that one wasn't, didn't include the honors level, but Jess is able to differentiate those classes and, and provide that. On page 48, we want to add for both mathematics and for world language, which would be on the back, the process for acceleration. So we are seeing in a wonderful way, we're seeing students that want to challenge themselves and take an extra math course over the summer, which moves them ahead in the progression for math or world language. We just want to put some parameters around that as that becomes a bigger and bigger movement, just so that people are aware that there is a process. We had not had in the past that many students that were interested in doing that. We were able to sort of manage it one-to-one, but we're getting more and more students. We just want to make sure that families know that this is the process that we're using. Students can do that by accelerating on an online class and then move into the, the next progression of the course at the high school, either after summer or after any time that they choose to take it.
And one thing just to mention is that if you take a summer class, that's not, it doesn't count towards your GPA.
No, classes, the only classes that you take for your class.
Yeah, or, and it doesn't count towards the math requirements. So that, I don't know, does it say that? I'm assuming maybe it says that, just to make sure. Like, cause all, same with, if they take it in middle school, it doesn't count as a high school level class, even though it might be a high school level math class.
I will, I will add something around that, Allison, in terms of it not meeting the.
The credit.
Doesn't count towards graduation.
It doesn't count as your credit status.
No, it's not credit recovery, right, because it's moving ahead.
But you have to be in Pembroke High School.
We don't give credit for the summer classes that we do online, no. I'll add a statement.
And the grade, they have to pass with a certain grade, but that's not reflected on the transcript?
Correct.
No, no, it's on the transcript. It appears in the transcript. It does not calculate towards the GPA and it cannot be used for one of the four years of graduate required math. But that, that course appears on the transcript. The college will see that they took a fifth year of math.
Yeah, but it won't count towards the GPA and it won't count as one of the four years.
And it's not four credits to apply towards your 88. It's not four credits to apply to your, your 16th for math.
Yeah, not credit bearing.
And you have to take one, one math each level. You take two one-year, that does not count as two years.
Correct. You have to take a math as a freshman, a math as a sophomore, a math as a junior, and a math as a senior.
You can't not take math your senior year, right?
That's correct.
Correct, if you take AP SATs and AP Calc in 11th grade, you still have to take math.
I just think that needs to be said.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think one of the other pieces that we talked about in EdSub as well is just recognizing that, you know, as you're, as students are, and families are thinking about these courses, it does require a lot more independence to do an online course and it's accelerated. If you do it in the summer, it's not over the span of a school year, so just to keep in mind.
And families are paying for it themselves. We don't pay for the acceleration.
There you go, yes. I mean, just something to consider, not to discourage, but to just do it knowing that, because it won't be the same as taking a class with a teacher. And I know that there are teachers who can be a point of contact, but Mr. Talbot, you might have something to add?
No, no, I'm nodding my head with you. I agree with you, yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
These class, the courses are primarily, they're asynchronous. There's a, there's an online teacher, the teacher with the program.
Yeah.
Office hours, email communication, post tutorials, video tutorials, so there's instruction via that video. But it's an asynchronous program. It's not a live teacher on the screen with them. There's a point of contact for them at Pembroke High School as well.
There's an information packet that goes to families that want to do this. So there is a whole process and a thing that Mark has families sign so that they know what they're getting.
Yeah, that's helpful.
I think there needs to be a new asterisk, asterisk for some of this to say that you might hit the credits, but they don't count unless it's.
Well, I think it's, I think it's for the.
For like math, you have to take four years of math, can't be done in three years.
Totally, yeah, but I think that it wouldn't be counting towards the credits. It would just go on the, it would be on the transcript, but it doesn't give you a credit amount for. Yeah, you were talking about an online course that a student takes in the summer. Allison is talking about some of our juniors take two maths, junior year. Oh, okay, got it. They still have to take a math senior year, so it's four distinct years of math, right? Four calendar years of math. Maybe we just say that.
It's just how it's written in that.
I think that's smart.
It needs to be written, like, four years of math, four years of English.
It's a good problem to have, though, really.
For the student help desk, I incorrectly added it as student assistant. That should be, it'll be treated like an independent study moving forward. Trying to work out the best way to support the students that want to do that work and also maintain an academic component to it so that it is, it's, that it's credit, credit bearing. AP Calculus AB and AP Calculus BC, that's just an update that acknowledges that AP Pre-Calculus is being added into the mix. So that's just the verbiage that goes with that. Gwen has also proposed for ninth grade treble choir and ninth grade band, allowing students to take that class for a semester. It can be a year long, but they can also take it for a semester. So that would provide a little bit of flexibility for some students. And the same thing, the same exact thing she added for concert choir, but we don't believe that will be necessary. She just wants to make sure that numbers-wise, she has enough students to run both a ninth grade group and a 10th grade or concert choir level. So we just want that flexibility to exist and for students to realize that they can do it for first semester, which provides them with the opportunity to participate in band camp, marching band, the holiday concerts. Lots of the tryouts occur during first semester for the, for the music competitions. So they can do that and take a break for a second semester if they want and then rejoin in the fall. So we'd also be looking, depending on what it looks like with student interest, is maybe developing an after-school course or, not, not a course, but an after-school opportunity for students who want to keep playing. So maybe there'd be some kind of a, a band club in the afternoons for students that can't fit it into their schedule, but they want to continue with their instrument in the afternoons. So trying to think of ways that we can keep kids in the program, but give them some flexibility to.
That's great.
And then this is just about courses. And I think we've been through the whole thing, the other things that are, that are listed here. The world language one is dependent on whether or not we make a change in graduation requirements. The acceleration is just like for, for math and Allison, I'll add that to this one too. It's, well, what it counts towards and what it doesn't count towards. And then the honors to French prereq was just a typo, so that was just something that was picked up this round. So that, my friends, are the proposed edits to the program of studies. And I know that's a lot, so over the next few weeks, if you have questions, put your questions now. Obviously here to get you the answers.
So a question I have, when they're called ninth grade band, is that just because it's the beginner? Like if somebody came in and wanted to go in as a 10th grade, are they not, is there a 10th grade place that they would then go into?
They go to concert band in 10th grade.
Okay, even if they've never been participating?
Right now, our ninth grade band is combined with the concert band, so.
I'm just, I don't have experience there, I'm just curious, okay.
One question I had was about the pathways, scope and sequence charts.
Oh, that's right, yep.
Just to see, is there a way to, and there, there are lots of different ways you could do this and you all would know better about how to do it, but to delineate that you can enter a pathway either in the ninth or the 10th grade, whether it be a separate table or another column.
Do you think it would be helpful just to add that as a statement at the top of the charts? That this is a, this is a recommendation, but students are, we welcome students to join at any point or to take classes in a pathways area. You don't have to do everything. You can take one class from that.
I wonder, i- is there, I, if we say, instead of grade nine, just say year one, year two, year three? Because I think some, even with that statement, if they're only seeing the, it, the chart mapped out that way, it'll feel like that's what has to be done versus.
Yeah, I think year one, year two, year three.
We can do that way.
Yeah, cause then it's, they, there, a freshman isn't looking at it, but it says ninth grade, mom, I have to do that. You know what I mean? So I think there's like pieces of.
But I like the idea of also adding at the beginning of the pathways description that there, there are opportunities to join at different points, just like anything that we do.
Yeah, like entry points and exit points, yeah. Cool, that sounds good. Thank you.
And are we going to, just along these lines, are we going to reinstitute having parents somehow sign off on these course selections?
Yeah, that's part of the eighth, like that'll be part of the eighth grade information that goes out. I think we talked about having incoming ninth grade families sign off, right?
I'm losing my mind.
Yeah, no, you were talking about in the, for the middle school, yeah.
I actually think it should be a little, I mean.
So some of it's a family conversation, right?
It's hard to have the family conversation if you don't know if your child's picked until it's already picked.
I need you to read the weekly update that says that we've done course selection.
Well, but I, even, even doing that, like, but, you know, you're right, the families need to, but some don't. And I think it's so important for the parents to be involved. It's too young for the kids to be, I mean, you know.
Right, I just, I think we should probably talk, that's not a program of studies thing, that's more of kind of like how it's. I don't want to be holding up the first run of the schedule because we're waiting for seven parent sign-offs. So I think we should probably talk administratively about how that would work best and then come to you all and say, okay.
That would be awesome, yeah, yeah.
That makes sense, yeah, like that is certain. There's a lot of people that we're still waiting to, to sign things for.
I get it, I get it.
After contacting this many times, it will go, we have to make the schedule.
Passive consent, if you don't go.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah. We'll, we'll talk about it administratively and.
But I would think that there is a way for us to send through Power School what a student has selected and that would give parents a window.
Yeah, I do think unfortunately sometimes the contact information in Power School for the email address isn't always accurate.
Yeah, what can be, that can be an issue, obviously, but you want to have the most up-to-date information on the parents. But how did we used to do it? Because I know with all of my boys, when they were in high school, I had to sign off on their course selections and in recent years, that's not the case.
So I think you signed off in Naviance. I think there was a parent.
I remember picking the, like, they would pick the courses and then I would have to.
There were some years that you went, I feel like it was in Naviance.
After they picked, then I would have to go on and say, okay, yep, and then I can remember, you know, having, that would facilitate discussions, like, are you sure you want to take, you know, four AP courses, you know, this year? Or, you know, like, or, I don't know, why do you want to take this course?
I can go back and ask Erin Tinker to look and see if it was something that was generated from Power School or.
And I think there's a lot of good suggestions that we'll talk about that is beyond the program of studies, but around having questions we can send home to families. We'll be sending home the information in advance. So definitely check the newsletters. If you haven't been getting any emails, then you should probably figure out if your email is wrong. So do that, because that way you'll make sure you get the information.
Well, when you register your child at the beginning of the school year, you have to put your email address.
Right, you're making the assumption that everyone has registered their child, and I appreciate that.
Well, if I remember correctly, isn't it like the last week of school, they get their printout? Is that emailed or how, like, I remember like that panic of wanting to change things and we have.
No, they get a, they get a hard copy of that in school.
Didn't we get it emailed to us, the parents?
I think it's also published in the same way that report cards are published.
Yeah, because I remember getting it and then that's when the kids.
That's kind of late to make changes.
Well, no, but you have, but then it says something like, the guidance counselors are here for another week.
That is correct.
And I think I caught one of them from his last hour.
As you can imagine, we've been before that, right? But it is also a final safety net.
And then they tell you when they come back and then I'm remembering exactly when they come back. Yeah, I think I get all those five minutes last year.
Can you remind, and this is just my bad memory, but remind us of the time period that parents should be looking for this information to come out again?
Absolutely. So we'll start inundating parents with information about course selection right around the first of February. That's when the teachers will start making their course recommendations. So it's important that students and parents know that their teachers are doing that and that involves conversations with the student and the teacher. And really at that point, if students and parents are talking about that, they'll know what they've been recommended for.
Yeah.
Right? And then the assemblies happen with the students, then we have our program studies night, and the kids start selecting courses at grade level, starting the first week of March, the juniors, second week of March, the sophomores, third week of March, the freshmen. That portal, it's like the courses, is open that entire week and the week after. So for the juniors, it's open the first week of March and the second week of March. It closes that Friday, the second Friday of March. So all of my communication is, parents, this is your time, ask your child, you know, have these conversations at home. You know, and I think it does happen quite a bit, but to your point, not everyone's doing that. I certainly get all that. So if.
And do courses between the teacher and the student, is that in writing ever? Like, because that's just the kid coming home and telling the parent.
Right, they don't get a piece of paper that says, it's done on, it's done through Power School. But I'm not too sure the student can see that through their interface. I think it's only on the staffs where we make the recommendation. But it is the conversation, right, with the kid and the teacher.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, technology's a great thing, right? It does a lot of efficiency. Chasing paper, chasing seven hundred course selection forms.
I get it.
Right? Like we used to do in the eighties back in the day, you know.
You will come up with some.
We can, hopefully electronic.
It was electronic.
That's what I was gonna say.
It was electronic.
You signed off on it on Power School?
I remember signing off on Power School. Like, I would get the teacher recommendations and there was like a couple with a couple of my kids where they weren't recommended for an AP or something. And I remember having a conversation, like, wait a minute, and I would email the teacher, like, why didn't you recommend blah blah blah, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So like, it really facilitates a conversation and I know it was electronic because all three of my boys had Power School. So I know that there was an electronic piece and it wasn't something sent home.
Yeah, I know. I feel like it was in Naviance for some reason.
I feel like it's something we could do through Power School.
Yeah, right.
I feel like because that document comes from Power School at the end of the year that we give to students, that we could.
It should stay.
Replicate that.
Yeah, we can work on that.
And get that to parents. I think we could easily.
Make it the easiest possible, not an additional piece of paper that needs to be signed.
We'll have to time box it to Mark's point. There'll have to be a time box, like, if you want to weigh in on this, here's your window.
Well, yeah.
And it would close, I mean, the ones who haven't done it, I mean, we're going to call five hundred parents that have not yet done.
You have until May or March fifth if you don't.
I guess, I'd want to know what used to be done. I remember like my, you know, like, we'd have these conversations and then my kids would get anxious about it. Like, Mom, did you sign off yet? You know, it would be like that kind of thing.
I'll check it with Erin Tinker and see what it is.
It makes sense. But I hear your point, because like, I don't want you to have to extra chase everyone.
Nobody needs seven hundred paper forms if we don't need to, if we can, especially if the kids don't have access to the Power School in the same way the parents do, unless they steal the login or something, then it should be the parent checking off on it, so. Thank you.
For my own kid, I have to log in as him to see his course selections. That's the way it comes. That's how I think it works at the high school.
Oh, okay, got it.
The students can see more than the parents.
Love it.
That's tough.
Wait till they go to college.
Yeah, you see nothing, David, but the bill.
Exactly.
Get the bill.
Just the bill.
Parking tickets and bills, nothing you ever see.
Okay, anybody have any other questions for either the new course proposal or the program of studies?
The only other thing, and again, this is not entirely program of studies, but procedure for us to follow up on is having the music and arts program do the presentation on the same day as the pathways and then also increasing.
Yeah, so it's not the same day. Donna has put together, is working on a schedule where they, I think there's four different meetings about course selection, so one is world language, one is arts, one is pathways, one is, I forget.
And it'll rotate type of thing, okay.
Yeah, so they hit all the students over the course of, I think, two and a half weeks, maybe three weeks.
Oh, that's great, yeah.
She's already trying to work that into her schedule so that it's smaller groups.
And more time, I know that, awesome. Thank you for that work, Donna, that's fantastic.
Okay, so do I have a motion for the consideration for first read of the PHS new course proposal?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then consideration, do I have a motion for consideration, first read for the 2025-26 PHS program of studies?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So long-range planning met last week also, and we met over at Habermock so that we could have an opportunity to both take a look at the playground structure. We chose Habermock because Habermock Playground gets the most usage on the weekends from some of the youth sports. So if we were going to say which one is probably in the most need of some upgrades, it would be that one, so we met over there. It also facilitated us to have a conversation about just safety on learning lane in general. So I think two separate pieces. So for the playground piece, what long-range planning talked about was how to really sync up with the community preservation timeline for funds. We did talk about partnering with the PTOs to fund an audit of the playgrounds. There's a local gentleman that reached out that was willing to do them and the price was quite reasonable. So I am working through the three building principals to talk to the PTOs to share that cost as well as sharing a timeline for when that can happen so that we can take advantage of the CPC funding cycle, which is a March timeline. So all of that is in progress. In addition, again, we were able to take a look at learning lane and talk a little bit about some of the challenges we have with Pembroke High School being an island and the eagerness of students to leave the parking lot and the exceptional eagerness of parents to get out of the parking lot, as well as our buses. So I think there's two pieces to the challenge. One is obviously the fact that there is some infrastructure changes we could make where the crosswalk is located. There is no stop sign coming out of the student parking lot. There is definitely a need for some sort of signage on the street that talks about what the speed limit is on the street. So I am working with the town manager and the DPW to get some ideas around what pricing would look like for that. I know we did talk a couple of years back about moving something over there and I feel like it was an outrageous price point because of the granite curbing, but we will get those pieces. But I think that the piece that we talked the most about is really within our realm to really effectively make changes to the behavior. And so we talked a little bit about what would it look like if there was an administrator on the other side of the street and we gave every kid that darted out into traffic a detention? How quickly would that change the behavior? We talked about a staggered dismissal. So there's obviously some equity pieces with that. Obviously, my inclination would be students on the bus, the buses are getting out first, right? Because they're getting, they need to get somewhere else. But we have a very boisterous population at Pembroke High School of students that I'm sure would feel as though we should rotate who gets out two minutes earlier or whatnot. So I thought that would probably be a nice topic for the representative that is meeting with the school committee board at the high school this week, Thursday, Thursday, yep, to talk with them, to get their ideas. I thought that might be helpful, but we are, I'm talking internally about what changes we can make that would affect student behavior. I'm sure Mike, Mark would love to be out there assigning detentions for GLO.
We have come full circle.
I asked you to get out of the parking lot after year one, I did. We are paying you too much to wear that vest. Please get back inside the building.
Hopefully you get run over.
Now I need you to get back out in the parking lot. You know, and I think some of it is misconception, right? I hear all the time, the junior lot. We do not have a junior lot. That is not Pembroke High School. That's not a Pembroke High School parking lot. I understand all of it, right? I have nieces that go to the high school, I have friends whose kids go to the high school. I understand all of it. I understand that it is gridlock. The Pembroke Police Department has been helpful in sending an officer to the end of the street, but is there a different way for the traffic to work? So those are the type of challenges that Mark really enjoys. So we will work on some of that and come back to you with what some proposed changes are as well as probably a capital item for the spring meeting if we're going to do some moving of crosswalks and whatnot.
Well, I know they have those solar crosswalk signs that blink when there's motion and then they flash like crazy.
And that was actually one of the ideas we talked about.
Because those are hard to miss.
Yeah, just to have some.
I feel like a sixteen-year-old driver's going to miss that.
You know, and the idea of the crosswalk too, like, if you're pulling out of the, you know, the senior lot, you're looking to see if the buses are coming.
Yeah, and just to clarify, obviously, we had an accident on learning lane the Friday before last. It wasn't a student coming out of the parking lot.
It wasn't because of that, but generally speaking. Generally speaking, the crosswalk is on your right and the brand-new drivers, because all the seniors who've just got their license are looking to left, you know? And so it's just not safe, you know?
Because all students are crossing on the crosswalk.
Yeah, exactly. And we have to encourage them to, but we don't want to encourage them to do that and then have.
Could be the wrong spot.
Yeah, it just, we need to do multiple things, I think. But certainly detention would be helpful.
I want to hear what the kids feel about that so you can get that feedback on Thursday. Well, it will change the behavior. Also, we clearly need it to not happen, so.
Yes.
Don't, you should use the crosswalk, students.
Yeah.
Once it's moved to the right spot.
Yes. Quick question, that meeting, the student council meeting, when is that on Thursday? I think the timing I needed to grab.
Uh, two thirty.
Two thirty, okay, great.
And can we encourage highly they vote to have?
Yeah, you're going to convince them that they need to decide who the one that is.
So can they just not vote for themselves? Can that be how it gets possibly done? Because I feel like we're missing out on.
There's only five of them, so.
Why wouldn't it be, we can't encourage them to do juniors and seniors, like, doesn't it?
They have to elect one of the five to be the rep that comes here. That is the way the statute is written. They, I think they have tried to come to a consensus, but it, they, I think there's more than one that wants to sit at the table, if I understand correctly.
Got it. Well, we're going to leave that meeting with a decision, so come up with ideas, students, because we're going to leave that meeting with a decision.
Is there any reason two can't sit at the table?
The statute.
Oh, all right. That's unfortunate.
Yeah, I know Erin mentioned that last time and I was like, oh, that's why, that's why, yeah.
It could all come.
When we were doing it in disregarding.
Yeah, I mean, I've been kind of wondering why nobody's been coming to begin with, so.
Right, yeah, I think they met twice together and still weren't able to.
But they could still be sitting here in the audience.
They're meeting virtually all the time.
No, that's what I mean, I'm kind of surprised they haven't been passed then. So maybe they can't vote for themselves.
A decision will be made on Thursday, some way or another.
Just don't vote for yourself. You're not allowed to vote for yourself. Get to vote for a different classmate.
Then how do you check that?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not allowed to necessarily be like, you must, but we're going to find a way to make a decision.
We could do ranked choice voting.
I'm going to bring a coin.
You all can figure that out at two thirty.
We're going to have, or we could do rock, paper, scissors.
We anticipated a student rep at the January meeting.
Rock, paper, scissors, yeah, we could do that.
Which of you are meeting with them?
Me.
Katrina. They're going to rotate, but this month it's Katrina.
And I made a schedule, so I'll share that with you. I was just drafting it to make sure it was good with everybody, but it's just one, we're just rotating in the same order.
Except we also can't choose one.
Except we don't have a statute telling us we don't have to, so sorry. I have to tell students that you must do this and we aren't even doing the same thing, apologies.
So Budget Sub, as you heard, we also met last week, very busy week last week, very busy. Again, shared that during maintenance of effort. The vocational planning committee did not meet last week. Nobody missed it. I don't want anyone to be concerned that they missed it. But we did want to give an update. Sue and I had an opportunity to meet with our new representative. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that or do you want me to?
Yeah, we met with Ken Sweets. He was kind enough to meet with us and just really get updated on the process, what's happened so far, what's about to happen. And he took a lot of notes and was very receptive to helping us and he's really, you know, we talked about the changes and the regulations that got us here and, you know, how that's something that needs to be solved and, you know, so he took a lot of notes around that. And we're really hopeful that he can, you know, be our voice as our new rep.
So the planning committee will meet in early January to just kind of go through, I've been working on some of the numbers with Tom Hickey on what it would look like if we joined. I think we, consensus was that it would make the most sense to do that after we're positive that the project has passed in the member communities. So that vote is January twenty-fifth in the nine-member communities and then after that, we would present kind of what our thinking. And so the presentation isn't a recommendation on, we think you should do this or we think you should do that. The presentation is, here are the numbers, and then you all can decide whether you want to move forward or not move forward.
And it doesn't actually make sense to put together this big presentation if they vote a different way and we have to change directions. It's better to have it done once, like, once we know what everything is. And so that's why we're waiting until January twenty-fifth and you haven't heard from us.
Yeah.
So we have to have some facts before we can make the next step.
And I know the towns, enough of the towns voted for the change of the way they're calculating the four-year average. I know that has passed.
So the regions, the changes to the regional agreement have passed in the member towns? This is the vote for the new building project? So they need fifty-one percent of the total population to vote in favor of the project.
I was just going to say, if you know anyone in those towns, make sure they vote because, you know, getting people out for a random election is tough. So, you know, make sure that friends in those towns that you know are actually voting on this.
So timeline-wise, are we potentially looking at a spring?
No. So we talked about the, our vote to, do you want to join and how much is this going to cost, have to be together. You know, I think if we were to do a vote that said, do you want to join, obviously everyone would say yes because it's a tremendous opportunity for students, but it's, we want to make sure that we're asking you, do you want to join? And how are you going to pay for it at the same time? So we talked about the fall of twenty-twenty-five, but.
So it's a vote to join and a debt exclusion vote at the same time.
That's what we're hoping for.
And can we, and this might be something that's already going to happen, but have an, or do you think it's possible to have an estimate of how much people's taxes would go up based on that?
So we'll show you the price per average household, yeah.
Okay, got it, thank you.
So I think we.
You were on future meeting dates and topics, and Allison and I just briefly touched base before this. I think you all are meeting the seventh and the twenty-first, unless you want to tell me that.
Does that, do those work for everybody?
Yeah. Yep.
And then when Patrick's back, we can hopefully add February ones to that too, so. Unless we want to add, talk about February now, but. Because February is a little tricky with February.
Yeah, I feel like we, maybe we could set the first meeting for February and then wait on the other one? Also, these will be six-thirty, right?
Well, the problem is, is that we have the February vacations, that kind of screws everything up and.
Yeah, so do you think we could, we should set the, just like the first week in February, though?
So do the first.
When's the vacation? Not the first week, right?
The third week.
Yeah, so we could do at least the first week, because we know that.
So that would be the fourth, that would be February fourth?
Yeah. I think we could set that.
Let's do those three dates and then we can.
Set the next one.
Does that sound, that's two weeks in between the last January until the February.
Yeah, I mean, we could set it for now, but, you know, let's see what Patrick says when he gets back and sometimes.
Okay.
He was one February.
Fourth or two fourths.
There was a request to. There was a request to, at the January meeting, have a special education overview. From what I understood, a conversation of kind of philosophy, where our program has been, where it's going, some of the advancements, some of the goals and some of the challenges. I think that I'm in need of just a little bit of clarification on what type of data you would like in order to kind of ground that presentation.
Yeah, after, I mean, Ken, the MESE conference, I think lots of brand ideas are out there. So that's kind of what I guess spearheaded this, like wanting to see what we're doing, where our number's at, where we can do better, where we're succeeding. I think Katrina's.
Yeah, I had some thoughts. Yeah, yeah. I mean, one thing I was wondering about is just like, we, there's, I think there's three categories of data. It's like data that we, is already being collected, that's available to the public. But I'm thinking of how often we, what opportunities we have to analyze it and to look at trends, whether it be in the sped department or others. I think that's the one that was top of mind when I was looking at certain data that's available on those student district profiles. And then another one is just thinking about like what other data is being collected that might be kind of in-house data in terms of like in a school, right? Like it may not be data that's necessarily shared publicly or with even the school committee, but what data is being looked at at a building level? And how is that being, how often is it being looked at to adjust practice? Whether it be IP goal achievement data, you know, that was one piece that with the new IEP, there's a, a new section around the method and the frequency of data collection. So there's ways to, we could consider having a tracker where we look at how students are doing between their, their progress reports because it might say that it's, you know, daily or monthly or weekly data. And that might not be something that comes to the school committee, but maybe it's something that can be used like with the teachers, with goal setting or, or what have you at the building level. So those are just things I was thinking about. And there's also a lot of data on the, the radar sped dashboard that you can look at comparative data for students with disabilities and without. And that's public, but I'm just wondering, what's our frequency of looking at that data? Do we have it, and this might already be happening, but like, how often are we looking at that data? What are we using? How are we using that to inform practices or adjustments or even budgetary decisions? If we see that this group of students, and in this case, I'm talking about special education, is really struggling in this regard, having a, if the school committee knows what frequency we're looking at that data, then we can have a better understanding of where to go and when for how to invest differently if we need to in special education. Because I know, you know, special ed is one of those areas that is vastly underfunded at the federal level. It's never been funded to the amount it should be with IDEA. And so I just want there to be enough support and for us to have the data to make those decisions if there needs to be shifts. And I don't know that there are, but that's one, one piece. And then there's also other areas that may not be public pieces of data in terms of like independent educational evaluations and how often we approve or deny them or mediations. Obviously, that isn't something that's public for other schools, so I'm not saying that it should be for us. But how do, maybe, maybe the superintendent keeps track of that, right? And, and can see if there's an upward trend in a certain area of like, we've had a lot more legal fees for special education this year as compared to last year and how do we need to think about that? And then, what else? Yeah, I think, just thinking about what data needs to be in-house versus something that's larger. If I understand correctly. So some of the items that you're asking for are not school committee-level data, but I think you understand that. Totally, yeah. So you're asking for us to come back and say, okay, so every, every quarter we take a look at the number of rejected IEPs, the number of mediations and the number of whatever thing is. And that's how we. No, it might be like annually, but I think that there's a way to keep track on, to see trends before there's issues. Okay, so just help me think through what, what our goal is. So if Jess and I say, okay, every year we look at this, this and this, but every year we make recommendations from the Special Education and Student Services Department. So I think I'm struggling with how, how you all determine success of the department? Or is that what the goal of the overview is to see like what's, what's working and what's not working or? I guess I, yeah, I think it's to figure out what's working and what's not working, but also how we need to invent, like add budgetary pieces if, if need be. So I'm just thinking also of.
I guess some of the data behind the decisions that are, that are made. Like the couple notes I wrote is like, assess the compliance with federal and state special ed requirements, evaluate the efficiency of resource allocations, measure the impact of service on student academic and behavioral outcomes. I was trying to see if this exists somewhere else and the closest I found was Newton. So in twenty-twenty-three, Newton conducted a comprehensive audit of its special education services. The audit focused on improving processes, resource allocation and ensuring compliance with federal and state guidelines. The report also addressed the potential areas of over-reliance in, on out-of-district placements and opportunities for better in-district program development. I never actually found the document.
So when I, when I talked to Jess about this topic, she said, well, we can do it on it.
Yeah, so there are districts that do that. We've done it in pockets over the years, like, I don't know, since I've been here, but we have hired people to come in and look at like our preschool program when we were expanding that or different areas of big special ed audit per se is a big undertaking in programming. I certainly understand like going overview. If you're looking for a bigger picture of like what I do at the beginning of the year, what do we do at the end of the year? How are we making, how am I making budget recommendations? What do people do in, like in the department of each building to assess like rejected IEPs? But you're not looking for like numbers, it's just processes? Is that what you're asking for?
I think that part is part of it.
Because some of it like, you know, like you had said, not public information, like number of this, number of that.
I totally get that.
I certainly see a trend in something. It's a conversation between Erin and I or the team chairs at our department meetings to talk about. Like I've seen an influx. We talk about that kind of stuff. So it's more internal trends that we see.
Can I ask a question around this? I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, do we even collect data like how many people in the special education department graduate versus other districts?
Yes, that's in the sped radar.
That's all public. Is there like even like information like that? Like I, I know we look at the overall picture for Pembroke High School, for example, and we compare, well, we've always compared like our MCAS scores and our.
Yeah, but we talk about our, our students, our sub-populations, our students with disabilities, our English language learners. That's all part of the achievement information that Mary Beth shares with you all.
But do we, do we like do like a separate piece and have it compared to other like DART schools or like?
Dropout rates or?
We can certainly do that. We don't generally pull out one special population and pit them against another special population in another district. I mean, it might be helpful. We could definitely do it, but we do.
Some of those categories don't exist if it's small, correct?
Yeah, so we run into some difficulties when you have under ten students in a particular category they don't report out.
You can.
That test is going away anyway.
I'm just wondering, you know, how do we, I guess the question is, how do we measure success?
Right.
In the end, I think, right?
And I'm curious, are you looking for an overview like to understand better? Or is there a student learning problem that you're hoping to solve for?
Yes.
Well, what is?
No, everything.
What's the secret sauce? Like what's the, like what, like I'm just, when I think about, like if I, someone said you have to do a presidential overview of general education, I'd be like, oh my gosh, where do I start? So I can just be like that thing.
I think one thing I'm thinking about when I was looking on the sped radar was about just student discipline rates as it compares to DART schools for students in special education and also dropout rates, post-secondary success indicators that you can see. Some of them, obviously, there's only like twenty-five percent of kids that will fill out that survey. So you have to take it with a grain of salt, so I fully acknowledge that.
But sort of doing like the DART and the Patriot League sort of comparable data from different, okay.
Yeah, and I, I was looking at that and I have all of the data downloaded. I put in our comparative schools. But just thinking about how we can give kids the most, the greatest chance of success post-high school. And so that, those were some areas that I was looking at was discipline and graduation rates and attendance, attendance. And I think we've had this conversation during some of the most recent budget cycles in the sense that there are definitely lots of models out there. I mean, you heard, you've heard us talk about what a successful model co-teaching is, but what an expensive model that is. We've also talked about the fact that, I think one of your questions was about compliance. Obviously, the goal is one-hundred percent compliance, but we don't have any extra staff. All of the staff that we have are tied to direct service, right? So there's, there's districts that still have, you know, three paras in the building that are extra and can provide inclusionary support. We do not have any of that here. And I think to your point, yes, that's something you all can support budgetarily and it has shown up every year as part of our priorities. It's just for administration, it ends up being a two because we know how little funds are. So every year there's an RBT on our list. Every year there's an additional.
It just may not make it to kind of your level.
Well, this is where two, where it's hard to put into, so if we had more resources, if we had more paras, would we be competing and succeeding as well as a town that has?
Bodies don't solve the problem.
Well, but, okay, so, so I guess that's where, like, if there's towns and districts that are having really good success on those metrics for their sped students, what are they doing? Is it a money thing or is it a?
Philosophy, I don't know what it is.
So that's what I guess I'm kind of looking at. Like is there, what can we do to like as a, as a, as a, as a body here to help? That's where I think we need to have like a kind of a basic understanding.
Of what's happening.
The data is really important. For example, the elementary, I'm going to keep using her because she's so amazing, but the elementary content supervisor came with all of this amazing information and data that we could, we could actually see, she's, she could take the data and show the teacher like, oh, like, look, you know, you should go in this direction instead because of A, B, C and D. And I, I just think like, that's all this really is, right? You're just trying to find the data to make some informed, like, informed budgetary decisions later, you know, if we're able to. So if, if you're recommending like a para for one thing or another or some sort of a specialist, we have no idea why because we don't have any background to what's going on. We don't know the dropout rates. We don't know, you know, any of the, you know, I leave that to you because that's, you're the expert, but we don't have any of the information at all. We just have it sort of mixed in with the overall population results and data.
So you have some of the information, right? We do provide, we do provide, we call out in presentations X, Y, or Z. This is office referrals, this is behaviors, this is that. But you all have a responsibility too to get to know your district as well. So if there's something that like is, you know, digging at you, like, I just want to find out more, there are resources for you to find out more that don't include Mary Beth, Jess and myself. Not that we're not always willing to, to do that, but like you can, you can do some research yourself too. I just want, the way I understood the request, it was, can you give us an overview of special education that isn't tied to the budget conversation? If you do them at the same time, they seem very commingled and things that are really nice to have sound like they're need to have and it gets skewed, so.
Just to back up, I don't know what the conversation was that you had. I'm just hearing this now and thinking.
Yeah, so the conversation was, can we do a special education overview to determine the success of the program?
Yeah.
That's a, as Mary Beth said, how shall I present on the success of general education? I don't know. So I think the hope was to just to get some pieces of information that will help you to, to kind of figure out in your own mind, is there some places where we could look for improvement? I would then expect you're hoping to see those suggestions in the budget presentation when it comes to student services. And then when our priorities come through, if there's something that administration said was a two, but you all feel like it's a one, then you, you all here are like, okay, so you have rugby as a one, but we think you should get three kindergarten, three elementary paras, let's flip them, right? So that conversation happens here. Obviously, those are not even relatively close to the same thing.
Right.
So I just, the presentation that's happening in the beginning of January is an overview of the department, what types of things we look at, some of the successes, some of the challenges, using some of the data that Katrina has dived into as well as what you've articulated tonight. And then the follow-up to that would be the student services budget presentation where you would hope to be hearing about some of the improvements that we'd like to make in the program. Does that make sense? Yes, that totally makes sense. And that's helpful because I think some of the pieces that I was talking about are already being done, but it's just, I'm not, I don't know. So it's, I think, educating us on what you all, you are already doing with that. And then make sure that we're on the same page with what a prior, what the priority is. Because I just want to make sure that we're investing in the areas that need the investment, right? Not to say we don't.
When we have.
I was, they're listening and I say this out of total respect. You come into this with these beautiful eyes of saying, wow, like I.
It would be great to do this.
It kind of changes the world, you know? And then all of a sudden you realize, oh, we don't really have the money to change the world. We don't even have the money to fix the world sometime. And I'm not trying to be down and like the thing, but.
Oh, no.
Wouldn't it be great if we had ten more parents? Well, you can't afford it. Wouldn't it be great if we had this? Well, you, you can't afford it, so then you have to, what do you do? How's it going?
Those led to good conversations about what could we do differently? What, you know, could we take some things from here and reinvest it over here? And those are important conversations for you to be having in a tight budget time. So what I hear you saying is to have that conversation when we get to student services, you just need a little bit more of understanding of kind of how we do what we do. Exactly, yeah.
But I would also say going back to, spend a lot of time walking that fine line between trying to improve education, trying to stay within our budget, you know, trying to make kind of everybody happy, students, teachers, administrators, parents. It, it's a very fine line.
Definitely.
And making sure we're still providing a free and appropriate education for students.
Awesome. That will be really helpful. We will try our best and if we miss something, we will get back to you on what it is. It's all good. If anybody also wants to look at the sped radar, anyone here, I can show you how it works because I've been spending some time in that, so, but it's all public.
Yeah, I was having a great time pulling up the AP and I was sitting there with my daughter and comparing all the schools and how many, you can even see like how many, like five, like it was.
Oh, AP enrollment, yeah.
Well, like in how they did on the TET, it was wild to compare like how many AP that we have passing. Like we killed it. Like it was really, it was really cool to look at, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just spent way too much time with weekend looking at that.
And there's also the educator-to-career pathways and data hub where you can see data stories as well about attendance and different topics that are, looking at districts overall, which is interesting too.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Lots of publicly available data for sure.
Do we have any other topics for?
That's great.
So I think we have to do a roll call for our executive session. I'll read this, executive session pursuant to chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A four to discuss strategy related to school safety as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the legal position of the school committee as declared by the chair. So roll call, vote. Sue?
Cut for, so move.
Oh, yes.
Second, those are.
All in favor? Sue?
Yes.
Yes.
Katrina?
Yes.
Help me, yes, all in favor. So we are now in executive session. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.